Good evening, welcome to the study session February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mary Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns. And Councilmember Gilmore.
There.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Okay, tonight's study session Police Chief Chris Costa has petition for us about public safety.
Good evening, uh, Deputy Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. Excuse me while I'm trying to do two things at once here. Uh, I think it's been quite a while since the police department, uh, has had an opportunity to come for council and, uh, explain, uh, the inner workings of our department, uh, what, uh, programs we have going on. And just having a good open dialogue and communication with you. So, um, again, I appreciate the opportunity and I hope that, uh, you get some more understanding from the police officer or, uh, uh, understanding of the police department and, uh, any questions you have, just let me know. Okay. Is that gonna be the best it's gonna get with the, okay. All right, just make it easier. Okay, so we'll start out with the, the mission of the Shelton Police Department. Uh, the mission of the Shelton Police Department is to provide excellent service and protection through leadership and partnership with the community. And when it comes to this mission statement, um, I wanna focus on the word partnership. Um, I want, that's something that myself and Captain Patton have talked a lot about in the last few months about how we want the direction of this police department to go. Um, we always feel we can do better in certain areas, but I think we can really improve on a partnership with this community. Um, having the council and just have better conversations and get to know each other better and understand uh, what, what is best for the city and how we wanna go about that. This is how we suit the knowledge then. Oh, are you doing that? Oh, I thought I was doing it.
How that's funny.
Okay, the next one, please. Uh, department structure here. Okay, so thi- this is what we call our chain of command chart. Um, we start with me at the, the head, uh, being, uh, CEO of the department, and then we have a Captain Pat- Patton from down and, uh, from him at dent filters down to the, uh, records and evidence clerks. And then we have, uh, four, uh, sergeants, two day shift and, uh, two night shifts. Um, our detectives and then our, uh, corporals actually come in just below our sar- our sergeants now between our patrol officers and then we have, uh, our patrol officers. As you wanna, uh, as you note too, um, myself and Captain Patton are, are primarily administrative. Uh, but our sergeants, um, they also have, uh, some other duties assigned to them that I'll get to in a second. Uh, next slide. So said, uh, right now we are funded for twenty-one total. We have nineteen sworn positions and, uh, two civil employees. Uh, again, starts with me, uh, me and the captain, which are administrative, uh, positions. We have our four sergeants that have different roles within, within the department. Um, primarily, they're gonna be, um, auto patrols supervising the patrol officers. But, uh, we have, um, patrol sergeants who are firearms instructors, who, um, uh, coordinate the FTO program, we're a K nine, um, instructor or K nine officers. Um, so it's kind of, um, with this, with the size of our department, everyone has to kinda take on a, another bite of something, especially when you start to promote through the ranks. Uh, we just don't have the capabilities of personnel to have a dedicated firearm officer, dedicated FTO trainer or anything like that. Everyone has to take on multiple hats through the department, but, um, I think with that opportunity, there's a lot of opportunity to grow for our officers as well, and they're very um, uh, anxious to, to take on more duties as they, they progress. Um, and then we come down to our two corporals, both of our corporals that just reached, like, got promoted are, uh, field training officers. Um, and, uh, one is a taser trainer, I believe. Um, and, uh, the other one is a lesson we call pepperball trainer. So again, as you move up, move up, you gain more responsibilities, but I think that, that creates a lot of ownership within the department and we, and it gives them opportunities to learn something new and do something else. Uh, then we go down to our patrol officer level, I'm sorry, our detectives, um, is, is next. We have two of those assigned. Those are full-time detectives. Um, they generally here Monday through Fridays, they, but they're on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, so they can be directed at any time, anywhere to go. Wherever it is, they also belong to a Kser team, which is the Kitsap County Incident Response Team. That's, that's, uh, basically our shoot team. Uh, we've been part of Kser now for approximately three years, I, I would say three or four years. Um, and, uh, it's, it's a group made of, uh, mo- most, most agencies in, in Kitsap County. It's Kitsap County Sheriff's, Bremerton, Orchard, Washington State Patrol. Um, there's a few more in there anyways. Um, so what happens is, is we're all part of this task force or team now. And if they have an officer involved shooting in Bremerton, they will call us as well and we will go out help and, and help, uh, investigate that incident. Our detectives, Captain Patton and myself are part of that team as well. Um, and we look forward into the future, hopefully getting, um, some of our officers on board as well. It's not only designated for officer-involved shootings, it's also for, um, uses of force incidents where we have a, a serious injury involving the suspect or we have an in custody death, um, say somebody um, expires in the back of our patrol car or we have, uh, temporary holding cells in the PD, so that's where we would call the case or out and they would do a investigation. One of the most important things about the case or thing, uh, case or program is that you don't you, we, we can't investigate ourselves. This is all about transparency. So if someone else is gonna investigate it, so if we were involved in an incident, other agencies from K certainly come, but we would not be involved with the investigation, same as, um, vice versa. Uh, we had one in Bremerton, actually involved Bremerton Tacoma, and I believe Kitsap County Sheriff's Department, uh, months ago. And they were scrambling because you just knocked down two, two of the three agencies involved in case or to even investigate that because you can't investigate your own, uh, incidents. So sometimes, uh, that, that was kind of a rare occasion, but it did come up, so. So to be mindful of. And then, uh, our last line is our two, uh, evidence and records expert, um, who man the front office and also coordinate all the evidence um, in, in the back room. Uh, next slide, please.
I, I have a question. Sure. So the corporals, are they on patrol as well?
Yes, they are.
Are they part of the eight or their?
They are part of the eight.
Are they?
Actually, um, I apologize, um, eight, eight currently is the, is the, um, is our patrol officers. Um, two of them are in the academy technically, actually one just graduated from the academy this morning, so you'll see him next week.
Congratulations.
Uh, yeah, so myself and Captain Patton were there this morning. Um, and we still, we still have, uh, two open police officer positions that we're still trying to, to get filled, which is uh, not as easy as it seems. And then we have one sort of resource officer, uh, position, which is making uh, we don't anticipate being able to fill that. Maybe the latter part of the year, we're still waiting on the school board to make their decisions on their, on their budget.
The school system still has some interest in still resource officer. We haven't been able to provide that individual to fill that position. They did not budget it for this existing school year. They'll start their budget process sometime, I think in March, actually next month, because they adopted budget in July. Uh, if we're not able to connect to that resource officer being available, they won't budget accordingly. And so at this point, we wouldn't make that commitment.
Something fully funded by the school?
About something by the present.
Think it was fully funded in the past. Yeah, in schools.
So, you know, it's kinda hard, like, behind my back. He's walking and there's, he's got a backpack in his hands. Then you see the two kids doing a lot of shame out of bushes over there and they come out. And then the kid was drunk and they tried to contact his parents. And they, they, you know, sat in a room for a while and talked. And I said, what do you do? You know, I mean, there's no, yeah, there's no kind of call. There's nowhere for the person to go. For the school resource officer, this way you have a little bit more accountability at work. You know?
The school resource, so, resource officers are, are awesome because they get to know the kids by name and face and they, they know exactly, you know, who they are and where they need to go or where they're wrong and that, like that. So they're, they're in a valuable resource. We haven't played. Unfortunately, due to our staffing right now, we're still too shy for, uh, too officers shy for patrol officer level. It's hard to fill that position before we get the city where it needs to be.
We can, same way. You can say, yeah.
Yeah, one, one more similar question, uh, detectives. Are they always detecting or are they actually on patrol at times?
Sometimes they fill in for patrol due to, due to our staffing levels that some, and sometimes things happen. They have to go out for a few hours and put the patrol. Generally, they're, they're mostly, uh, running through investigations, but from time to time, they do have to help patrol.
Thank you. Do you wanna blast through and then take questions? I don't wanna stall you out on like slide two here.
However, you guys.
So, so, you know, to George's point there, you know, we gotta figure that out. So we just need some more information here. So how do you determine your staffing levels?
That, that's just reset the legend. Are you, are you talking about?
Yeah, I mean, how do you know?
Yeah. Our minimum staffing levels are set in CBA for two officers per shift. Yeah, so that's where we're sitting at right now. The unfortunate part with that is if we have a major incident, can't do much with two officers. You can barely shut down two, two sides of the road. You know, so then we still have to investigate it. So we, uh, if something like that happens, we literally have to pull in for our department to help with these investigations and also the Sheriff's Department, the VSP, wherever we can get.
Totally. I, maybe my, maybe by the way, ask the question. So Wostick published a report. Um, and they often refer to the officer per capita ratio, one point three six officers per thousand people or whatever. So Shelton were one point nine. So we're higher, right? Roughly, very correctly, my map roughly on that for.
Yeah.
Right, so. I guess, is that, how you, you know, so when you say, I got eight on patrol, is that enough?
No.
Right, so how do you know what's enough? Like, what, what's the goal or do you kind of?
I would. First of all, our shifts, right? So we're, we're running twelve-hour shifts, right? So, um, you have two graveyard shifts, two swing shifts and two day shifts. Correctly, so let me speak pretty generally.
Um, so normally there's no set standard on what staff it's gonna be. And, uh, I know this because I just did a master's, uh, class on this exactly. So it's normally budget-based or historical-based or needs based on the plan that the departments wanna put in place of what they wanna see accomplished and strategic goals. Um, so historically, we've always been at, uh, twenty point five or twenty-one FTEs for the last maybe five years or so. A lot of that is budget-based. Uh, this year is just, uh, we're a lot forward because we can't get that recruitment in. Uh, but right now, we're sitting with their nineteen, we are scraping the bottom of the barrel. And so this is the very first year that we took our corporals and put them into a swing ship situation to balance that staffing. So now we have someone calling it sick and we have a minimum staff at two. Since that corporal is kinda covering both sides of a day shift and a night shift, our overtime costs are a lot lower. Um, we saw significant savings in January, so.
Yeah, I, I think for us, it's I, I'm thinking like MaceCom. MaceCom, we said, we, we determined based on call volume, based on user input, it's like seventeen FTEs, what we need. Obviously, you don't have seventeen FTEs, there's twelve, right? And so for us, it's like when you talk about budget base, you know, we've obviously give a lot of complaints from the public about wanting more cops and it's like, okay, um, you know, we have a finite budget and we have to prioritize the budget. So it's kinda would be good. You know, I know you're working within your needs. I respect that, appreciate it, but where do we need to be, right? So how can we start prospering the budget to get you there, right? And it's, it's just part of that discussion. So I'm just kinda curious, like, how you how you kind of arrived there? Is it like call volume data and you know, obviously? You know, I don't know, I just wanted to try to figure out how to prioritize the need, I guess.
And then, and then out of the two per shift, who's drag, who's taking these prisoners in the swally?
They're not. So it's either we get to we're lucky enough to get to Mason County Jail. Well, we're calling somebody in on overtime to transport, but we're letting them go.
Customer show, I, I, I think that's really what you're, what you're getting to, right? We, we've said it, we've said a little service stand.
Yeah.
But it's based on minimum staffing. It's not, it's not necessarily based on our aspirational staffing, it's based on minimum staffing. We don't wanna go below two officers on shift at any one time. But with, with lead, whether it's like lead and, you know, lead, shift differential, you know, or, you know, should, you know, different shifts, um, it's really difficult to staff all of those shows at the nineteen. Yeah, if we had more, you have more flexibility. It reduces overtime. Right, gentlemen, uh, first and foremost, and then we could look at uh, adding a third patrol officer potentially, and then you're making those transports. Or some of the other services that may be provided.
Um, just a quick, you're one point three six per, uh, one thousand. That's probably the second to the lowest ratio in the United States. Um, Mid-Atlantic states are typically about one point nine, two point oh, so um, we're already kind of getting involved.
Oh, yeah, I'm with you. I am just trying to figure out where we need to be, you know, and, uh, how do we get there?
And, and to tell you the truth, you know, at least in my time here, um, it's too young and might have, have a different, um, perspective, but we haven't sat down and analyzed that. We haven't sat down looked at specific call volume in my time and said, you know, if we had forty-five calls in the day shift last week, and so they basically there was no proactive leasing. It's all response.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and we haven't looked at that over, uh, a period of time last year, so they'll, they'll talk about call volumes here in a minute and be able to talk about that specifically, but that's something we haven't done and we need to do particularly as we start formulating the twenty twenty-five budget.
Because if we're interested in something like a public sales tax measure, you know, having that, that background data where we need what those dollars are gonna be appropriated for and how we're gonna get there is important, so. Next. Go ahead.
Recruitment and retention, uh, there's a first of all, we're gonna explode this photo. That's two, that's Sergeant, uh, uh, DeRosh and that's Officer Blaylock, apparently in the middle of identity crisis, hanging on to the back of the fire. So it just illustrates the problems we have sometimes on retaining, uh, people who never know which ways they're, they're gonna wanna go. Uh, many challenges though, uh, obviously the current, uh, environment for law enforcement isn't very friendly and people become very skeptical and shy of entering into this field anymore. I mean, you're always seeing how, um, you know, we're, um, involved in some uses of force that are highly politicized and all over the news, almost be part of that. Um, so I think where people are looking at that and going, maybe that's not the best avenue and road I wanna go down, you know, I mean, but like I, I say, you know, I wanna, I'll die for you, but I won't go to jail for you, you know, and that makes perfect sense, you know? I mean, we don't wanna get arrested doing our jobs, you know, and that's, that's unfortunate kind of status of uh, how we, how we think about that sometimes. Also, um, our staffing issues, um, along with most other agencies, it's really hard to find, um, individuals, um, qualified individuals who wanna be a police officer. Um, we've been at below minimal for at least a couple of years now. I think we got up to, for about maybe two weeks last year, man, I think we were at full staff and then, you know, so, you know, so, some things happened, some people leave, some people didn't make the FTO, and that just kinda changes the whole thing, but this is this is not something that's just unique to us, that's across everywhere. Everyone's fighting for for, uh, candidates, uh, for their, their agencies. Um, and there's two type of candidates. There's entry level and there's lateral entry level or the people who have no experience and that, uh, they, um, you know, you're gonna have to put through academy and there's considerations take place when you're hiring somebody uh, that's entry level, because that's basically gonna take you, once you get through your hiring phase, um, you're, uh, you're, uh, you get them into the police academy for five months and then you get them out on that, you know, you're looking about a year investment into that one person until they can be out on their own. So that's a huge commitment, uh, to put towards one person. So you really wanna make sure you, you grab the right individual there. And sometimes it always doesn't work out, uh, but that, that's across the board because, um, the other type of, uh, candidates we have are laterals and those are, those are people that are in the police academy and and have been successful with their agencies through the FTO program. And then you can get those up and those individuals up straight and bring them straight over to your department. They don't obviously have to go to academy or any training. Uh, but those are very few and far between now. Uh, there's huge fight for laterals out there. There are in with their hiring bonuses and everything. Algonia, would say Algonia, California, seventy-five thousand dollar hiring bonus?
I believe it's Alameda.
Alameda, California, so, yeah, so and that, that's fairly different.
That's pretty rich, pretty rich area. I think they.
Yeah.
Horse track there and, uh, yeah.
Yeah. That's it. Yeah, so, uh, we see a lot of about twenty-five thousand or so in this area, but so that's another thing you're competing with is people are, you know, looking for the best deal for them.
And you get laterals from other states?
Yes, we can. They have to go to an equivalency academy, which is two weeks long up at CJTC, but that's great as well, you know? It's, it's hard sometimes being a transplant and I am one. I came from California and then I came up here, so it's different laws, a different way of doing things. But the base job is the same, but it's just, you know, sometimes they have trouble coming in and, um, figuring things out a little bit, or it might take longer, but we've had good, some good, uh, very good results with, uh, our last one, which was, uh, also Portillo, out of Nevada. He did excellent, we're full now, so. Um, also, uh, the entry levels go through public safety testing, which the city subscribes to. And that's where we get the names for our entry levels. They go through a, a written exercise and a physical agility test. And they get their names on the list. They were given their scores and then we, we can interview them from there and then throw them into a hiring process, which consists of, you know, an interview, background investigation, a polygraph, psych and a medical evaluation. A lot of departments can kind of get hung up with that and it can take maybe six months to get hired on a department. We're actually pretty good here and we can probably get done with about a month and a half or two. So we can, we can once we get a really good applicant, we probably can get them on within about two months. So we, we've got a really, a smaller this office right next to mine, we coordinate a lot easier. I don't have to send emails and wait a week for a response or anything like that. We can just get people going, which is nice.
So it takes you, sorry, you said it takes about a year to fifteen months after you offer the job to they're on their own.
Correct, yes.
Basically, tip. That's been typical then for, for a long time, so.
Absolutely.
Um.
And now, now with everyone going to the academy as well, they're pushing a lot of people academy. It's hard to get academy dates right off the bat, so sometimes you're waiting for two to three months just to get that application in, into the academy. So it's not right off the bat. You could be waiting for a little while.
Yeah. Officer Houston was actually on board for a couple of months before he entered the academy, working, working in the office.
He was, he was about three months in the office before we got him into the academy. And we even had him set up with the academy prior to even hiring and anticipating this hire. I got him on the list. But still, he was in our office for three months. He was, but it was a, is a great learning tool for him. He did reports, he rode with officers, he he worked with the records and evidence, uh, clerks. So he did learn a lot about our department, which, which helps now because now I just re- uh, graduated from the academy now, is onboarding. It's a lot, the transition's a lot better. He's all familiar with everybody. It's not a foreign environment. Um, so he can progress a lot faster.
What is the age minimum?
Twenty-one.
So that's a, this, that's a good fact to kinda think about. So if, if we find the revenue through a ballot measure in twenty twenty-four, it applies in twenty twenty-five, we can budget the revenue. Then you can go hire your, theoretically, if everything's perfect, you know, you will hire four more people at entry level. It's gonna take at least a year, so twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-six.
And, uh, things don't happen over.
Yeah. How long does the academy?
About five months long.
And we, we currently have a public safety tax, but it's minimal. And if a county were to, to go out after the same public safety tax, we would get quite a bit more. Do we?
We'd receive forty percent, forty percent would be, would be distributed amongst the the municipalities within the counties, cities only municipality, they see forty percent of the total collection. Right, yeah.
It'd be significant.
Yeah, I, again, I'm not sure what it, what it is. I think there's that calculation that was done at some point in the past, but
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some legislation now, legislature that would, uh, make it councilmatic. Yeah, and voter approved. And, and if, if the county did not select to, um, to impose that public safety sales tax, then the cities within that, that county would be able to impose that councilmatically, but I'm not sure the status that built at this point.
In lieu of signing bonuses, what are other recruitment and retention measures that the city can adopt?
Uh, one, one thing we're doing, uh, with our department is we're giving our officers training opportunities that which is kinda like choose your own adventure, as long as the department has a, a need um, for, for that particular, uh, function, whatever that might be, they will, they would turn in a proposal uh, for this type of training activity and say, this is how it can benefit the department and we can give those in, in front of people, we try and give those opportunities to them to kinda choose their own career path and we, we help facilitate that for them. So, um, bigger departments, a lot of time, you don't get that. You just know you're gonna be on patrol for this long. You're not gonna get these opportunities till you've been here this long or you've achieved this or anything like that, but we can give some of those opportunities fairly early in their career. Um, another opportunity that we're offering right now is, um, case or, which I talked about earlier. That was only open to, you know, the chief ca- uh, captain and detectives. Um, but we're also able to add officers to that list as well. So we're kinda throwing that out there to, as well. If they wanna be a part of that case or, case or team, they can start learning, get involved at these, um, um, bigger investigations, you know, getting, um, getting ready to maybe go detectives or just for their own personal wellbeing and, and knowledge for their, uh, position, so.
Some municipalities have done below market rate housing for their city employees. Is that something that the police force would be um, positive to or?
Would not.
Not eligible for that. We wouldn't be able to.
Probably not, yeah.
You mean? We have, we did institute retention.
Retention bonuses?
With the last contract that was.
Yeah. They've had, they've had two years of retention bonuses now. They'll get a final one. They get one every December, as long as they stay for the the, the, the complete year after that, then they get to retain that.
What's the education?
High school diploma for, for patrol officer.
How many FTO, how many people can you train on FTO at once?
Probably do, uh, I'd say about two, maybe three at most, probably two, probably max. Yep, right. Yes.
There'd be almost impossible.
That's another.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we get you the funding. You can do two at a time.
If you're able to hire, hire more.
Able to get them.
You can, uh, get them on, yeah.
Same training, again, similar conundrum we had in dispatch, right? Like, you can, sure, you can budget for it and you can go find them, but we can only train one at a time, two at a time, right? So it takes six months to get, it's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
It's uphill battle.
It'd be really hard to go full capacity with that just due to people's time off and they have to switch from this FTO this week to this FTO this week because someone's you know, sick or on vacation or things like that. So it's, it's a huge juggling act, so.
I think I asked, uh, Chief Moody, Chief Beeson, and I'll ask you now, what, what's your dream? I mean, how many officers would, would be in your world if they're, they're perfect?
I want four per shift.
Four per shift. Yeah, that's the honest answer. Darren only wanted four more officers, so.
One sergeant, three officers per shift.
Well, I guess that's the same, isn't it?
No, it's not. No, one sergeant, three, three officers per shift.
Yeah. Sound, plus the cars.
Thank you.
I'd like a goal.
Yeah. Oh, it's a, a K nine program. We have two K nines right now. The first K nine is K nine Ballard. He's partnered up with Sergeant Downs. He's four-year-old German Shepherd. And then our second K nine is, uh, K nine Lex. He's partnered with Sergeant Diaz. Uh, about five years old and he's a German Shepherd, uh, Belgian, Belgian Malinois mix, both. Yeah. Malinois, yeah. And, uh, so they're both certified in tracking, uh, building and, uh, building and area searches for persons as well as articles and apprehension. Uh, both of them certified last year. Um, last year they had to, to twenty-five deployments last year and eleven captures. And when they deploy, it's not only just us, the point, um, we also help out Mason County Sheriff's Department. We deploy out the SWAT team and all their out, outside agencies, while we respond out to Kitsap County and assist them if they need K nine. So they're, they're kinda all over the place, so get lots of good experience. Uh, the, the K nine program is also has a, a four, five oh one C three foundation. So that helps them with their medical, their food and their equipment. So when they're, they, I was just talking to Sergeant Downs earlier today about you know, how, how their five oh one C three, how their account looks, and he says it's, it's, it's always getting the donations, so they have adequate funding in there to to take care of their K nine partners.
I do feel like two with the nap.
I think two is, two is plenty for the Shelton Police Department right now, yes. It's a, it's a huge, um, commitment on our part and they have to go to training sixteen hours a month. Um, and there's, um, there's other budgetary issues involved with them as well. So I, I think two is plenty for Shelton PD right now.
That's more training than you guys have.
We are only manning mandated twenty-four hours a year and maybe sixteen hours a month. But our department does do a lot of training twenty-four hours a year. Every officer gets about a hundred hours of training per year, so we definitely go away.
I think cons- considering police department's budget and the support for the K nine program. Uh it it it's not in the budget, right? So um if that went away, if. Supports and circumstances happen, we have a commitment to provide these canine services at this point and it has to be funded somehow. Um so something just take into account, um you know, fundraisers and public support is great. Um we do park projects, do with all kinds of things, but. At the end of the day, we we made a commitment, have a responsibility to provide these services and are we gonna continue funding these if necessary, so. Something to consider, just something to keep in the back of your head. Uh if if the time comes when uh we can budget appropriately because the maybe the nonprofit or, you know. Fundraising doesn't meet, doesn't meet the goals of administering the program. Uh we'd have something that to keep the program going or make some tough decisions on how we how we administer that program.
And at what age approximately do you retire them?
I think they are running till about seven.
They're getting pretty close on that.
Yeah. It it no way, it's 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 a lot depending on the dollar too as well, obviously, but um I think they're just. They they'd start to get to where I'm gonna be that hurt me. Okay, I I talk a lot about accreditation, um we can talk about a little bit. Uh accreditation is managed by WASPIC, that's the Washington Association Sheriff's of the Police Chiefs. And that's uh basically what that is. That combines representatives from the local, state, tribal and federal agencies and they. Come in, they collaborate together and try to adapt policies and programs to enhance public safety and accreditation is. Uh one of them. Uh accreditation helps uh increase public confidence, ensures uh recruitment and selection and promotional process. Are fair and equitable, and it also helps us uh decrease our susceptibility uh for civil litigation. Uh because it's keeping us uh within the best policies and and practices that we can uh provide to. Um our first accreditation uh was in two thousand eighteen. That that accreditation uh only accounted for one year of police work, so when they, when we accredited in two thousand, it was a two oh, two thousand eighteen accreditation. They, we only had to prove all these uh standards, uh which is a hundred and forty-five of them. For one year. This last time, uh we had to cover from nineteen twenty twenty and twenty-two, so we had to cover four years. Of standards, which is just uh it's it's a huge, huge lift. Um there's a total of seventy-eight accredited agencies in Washington State right now that includes. Police departments, sheriff's departments uh and jails. Uh so it's just a, it's just a huge undertaking. It starts with file maintenance and what we have is we have a computer program. It's called a. Uh I want to say Profinix, it's a, anyways, it's a different program. Nope. Anyways, um there's a computer program round run into a cloud. And we go through all of these uh standards. They're they're broken down into eighteen chapters, a hundred and forty-five standards. They range on uh different things like uh goals and objectives, use of force, records management, training. Um evidence, and so we just have this huge lot of things we gotta go through and we have to provide. Groups uh that we are maintaining our accreditation standards. Some of them can be fairly easy and you only have to put in a few things. Other, I'm I'm downloading fifteen, twenty PDF documents to prove this one file, so. Especially when it comes to the training, because we have to prove that we're maintaining those standards at all of these years. You can't miss. Um so once we have all these these uh standards in place and we have them in the the uh, it's called Power DMS, thank you. Power DMS, once we have it all uploaded in Power DMS, um and we're ready to go, what we have is a, it's called a mock assessment and it generally has about. Five um other assessors from different departments, not our own, so they'll come from all over and they. They they'll go in virtually. They don't even have to show up at this point in time. They go into our files. They they go through them one by one and then they're gonna make notes whether we're passed, where it needs work or they're they're not compliant. So that's the first step and then we get all those results back. And and then uh we get an opportunity for, I think it's about two to three weeks, depending on how it's scheduled. And we get to go back into those files and then, you know, provide additional information to make those files complete. As we can, and then they do another assessment. That's the, that's the final assessment and then that's where they. Uh compile all the findings and then uh they're gonna generate a report and they're gonna forward it on uh to WASPIC. Also, uh in the midst of that, there's an onsite, so one of them will come here. They will look at our police department. They will interview officers, they will interview Captain Patton, they will interview me. Um and they stay for about, they stay about for about four hours or so, and so that goes into their report as well. After the final assessment is done, they record it to WASPIC and um I get to go on to the uh the commission meeting, which I did uh. Back in October and. Basically, if there were any deficiencies or anything like that, or I just want to brag about how great my department was, I get my opportunity in front of the commission. And and talk to them about it, which I did, and then uh then they approve us and you get a reward, which we were successful this this last year, so I'm very proud of us for. Uh maintaining their accreditation standards. It was a huge feat. Everyone is involved. It touches everybody within the department, so just very thankful that. We were able to pull it off and and maintain our accreditation for another four years.
Two things, chief, um we're we're uh makes us eligible for a grant, right?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yeah, it's for CJTC. They have about a million dollars. And um every uh every department that is currently accredited can apply for it. Um and I think the maximum per department is fifty thousand, but we'll just have to see how many people go after that.
Yeah, so and as stringent as the citizens, we were talking about. If if one officer misses one training or doesn't meet one, one training.
Exactly right.
It jeopardizes the accreditation. It's that stringent, so. Uh these gentlemen in that department have to stay on task, if you will, right? And we meet the accreditation standard.
Something you have to keep, something you gotta keep up with on a monthly basis or else it'll get away from you, even in these not accreditation years, you know. We don't have to prove every standard e- every year, but there's a handful of them that we do, but. Even so, we have to keep up everything because they're gonna ask any of this.
Yeah, and I'll just keep kind of saying it like this, but another reason why the cars will be parked from time to time, because people need to do training, need to be able to do that. Need to be able to support that, so just because they're not out burning gas twenty-four hours a day doesn't mean they're not doing the job, so.
A general statistics, um I'm gonna get uh later, later this year, we are, uh I'm gonna go more over some statistics with you when I present the annual report. We're currently compiling that now, so these are just some quick statistics. I was able to pull up from twenty twenty-two and twenty point three. Um as you notice, our call volume uh went up about twelve hundred calls over the last year and that's basically staying at status well understaffed. Um uh reports written was about the same. Uh one thing I'm deriving, I'm kind of just kind of looking at this. Uh just kind of trying to figure out what happened and why the numbers they are the way they are. As you know, this felony arrests are down, misdemeanor arrests are down. Traffic citations are down, traffic collisions are the same. What that tells me is, and I'm just, until I get further statistics, I'm not positive. But our productivity is down due to call volume. They're responding to more calls, so they don't have the opportunity to make. More of those felony arrest warrant uh arrests or the misdemeanor warrant arrests that usually come from traffic stops. The productivity out in the field because they're running to more calls now, so that's just something I'm kind of look at these numbers and see why they're the way they are. When when I have the uh annual report later on this year, I'll have more information on those statistics. Okay, uh few, few significant uh case laws and legislation that's gone uh through in the last few years. Uh the first one, I think everyone's probably heard about, is the two thousand eighteen case, Martin Bertha Boise. Which was uh uh decided in the ninth circuit, which. Which uh affects um nine states or Alaska, Arizona, California, Hawaii, Idaho, Montana, Nevada, Oregon. And us. Uh this is regarding public camping. And what they determined in this is basically if there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigenous homeless people. For sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter. So that directly affects our public camping uh or city ordinance. Where we have to give uh them an opportunity to seek our resources, to find someplace to stay before we can arrest them. If we don't have someplace to put them, they they are not subject to arrest. So uh there is a uh a a similar case coming out of Grant's pass. It's Johnson versus Grant's pass. That is kind of going along the same route as this one as well, but that one actually um just went up to the US Supreme Court. Uh for discretionary review, so that one could have an effect on us uh down the road. I think Dan's Dan's been on this and. We expect maybe something in June or July uh for for uh to see where this one goes, so that that one might really affect how we can. We can enforce the city ordinance, so. Uh next one is state versus Blake felony drug possession.
Let's go ahead. Supreme Court, they actually said they're gonna hear that case?
Not yet. They're they're they're. They didn't say they're gonna hear it. They're gonna do discretionary review on it right now.
Because they wouldn't hear the last one that went up there on the Martin v. Boise a couple of years ago, they wouldn't hear it.
Uh next, uh the state versus Blake, the felony drug possession law that came around in twenty twenty-one. Were basically called, uh it said that that felony drug possession was unconstitutional. Um the the effects of that was just horrendous. We, you know, a lot of convictions were vacated, dismissed. It. Really caused a lot of issues, especially within the courts, not so much us. I mean, we just couldn't arrest people for it anymore, but. Um in the la- in the later part of that year, they did do a a temporary legislation making it a misdemeanor. The the problem with that legislation was is that we basically had to give them two chances or two warnings. Prior to making a physical arrest, so when it, when it comes to a prosecutor's point of view. We arrest somebody for this, prove to me that he's been uh given those chances twice. There's no state system. In place that tracks that because we don't know, I mean, we could track it locally, but we don't, we don't know what another outside agency is doing, so it just basically made it. Virtually impossible to track, which means we couldn't arrest anybody for any possession. In twenty twenty-three, they did have uh. The uh the Blake fist, which may, oh, I'm sorry, just talked about that. Um it's gone to pursuits, uh House Bill one zero two four pursuits. This one was in twenty twenty-one. This one really um. Really made it hard for us to do any type of uh police pursuits whatsoever because. You needed probable cause to initiate a pursuit and you only, you only could initiate a pursuit for a violent uh violent crime, a sex crime. Or a DUI, so probable cause is. That means the fact that would cause a reasonable officer to believe that the person that committed a crime. So let's take this scenario in place. If we went to a bank robbery, we saw, we had a description of the vehicle, which is. Uh you know, whatever, a gray Chevy or whatever like that. We see a gray Chevy taken off from that bank. We don't have probable cause to stop that vehicle yet. We have reasonable suspicion to 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 stop that vehicle, but not probable cause, so we cannot pursue. We can't pursue someone who possibly just ran it, uh robbed a bank, so that was the huge issue with that and that's why you saw. There was a huge uptick in um vehicle thefts around that time because they all knew it. They knew we couldn't chase them. They knew that we needed probable cause and we only have reasonable suspicion to stop them. That's why you saw a lot of, a lot of termination of pursuits and a lot of cars getting stolen. Back then because uh the criminals knew it, and when we started being able to pursue. Um with the with the uh with the House Bill or the State Bill five three five two. Um and we could all, and the reason why we could start pursuing that a little bit more is because now we can pursue for reasonable suspicion and not probable cause. So now we got back to where a little bit, little bit more, you know, okay, we think something's wrong here, but. We don't have enough to arrest you, but we have enough to detain you and investigate it. That's basically reasonable suspicion is, and so we can start pursuing people again for reasonable suspicion. Um in about ten amount of crimes, there's a few more uh few more added domestic violence, uh vehicular assaults and things like that. And it was funny because. When we started getting involved in a few pursuits, the, and we kept on pursuing them. I noted this on in a county pursuit that started to come towards the city. The actual offender, he says, I I didn't know you guys could chase me anymore. You know, they they expected us to give up and so they weren't keeping up on current case law. But it's, that was their mentality, they, they thought they could just do whatever they want.
Nonviolent property crimes are still not.
Correct, right. Now, there's a new one coming out and that's in uh twenty twenty-four, it was initiative uh two one one three. Which would basically restore where we were prior to the initial twenty twenty-one. So um and then we'll see how that goes. That's just, that's just something new that came about um. See where we land with that.
So it's going to the ballot, I think, isn't it, right?
Yes, it did. Yes, it did. Uh can we go into some recent accomplishments for us in the last few months? Um we had a successful transition. Um and a huge part with that was the succession uh planning that we got hold with uh prior to Chief Beeson leaving. Um I had a lot of uh personal training from her and and our chief uh Chief Moody as well. Um they really guided me along my my career path and Captain Patton had a lot of um. Uh planning to, he went to the FBI Academy. He uh was it ten weeks long over there? FBI Academy graduate, he's currently in a master's program, so um we we're really uh developing ourselves and our officers. Um corporal testing was a success. We had five, five applied, six applied?
Five.
Five applied. Um and as you know, we promoted two of two of them. Uh we've increased supervision uh for the police department. Um and initially, the, we were thinking that these corporals were just gonna be stagnant on on a graveyard to. Allow for the sergeants to be away and then we could have still a supervisor coverage. Um we we soon realized that we could even do better than that and we made it kind of like a hybrid. Type of corporal's position where they actually float. They usually come in around noon to midnight. And that that means they're there for the busiest parts of um the call and take for the city for the day. But they will flex to accommodate if the sergeant uh was not coming in in the morning or coming in night. They are able to, they'll come in early. For that sergeant to come in late, we'll cover for that sergeant, and so we saw um uh. A significant uh savings in overtime last month, a little bit over five thousand dollars just by them kind of. Shifting a little bit and we're still getting better coverage um for the most part uh through the city during the busy times, so that was a huge success. I do a little ability enforcement to propose this run for the state. Um we haven't done this in many years as well, but um we just ran one um last uh. It was on Super Bowl, actually. We did a DUI enforcement. Um we get funding for that from the state. Um so they're gonna go out and they they uh log and document all their hours, their contacts. And then we send that off to the state and then we're reimbursed uh for those costs, so we get better. Coverage for our city, for traffic safety and DUI enforcement. And we're we're getting reimbursed by the state, so we just started that program up, just started our first, first one going uh this last Sunday. So I haven't got the numbers back on yet, that's where we're going. That um uh internet crimes against children, this is um, it's also called ICAC. Uh we entered an agreement with them. Um the the lead agency for ICAC was Seattle PD. And you know, some of these investigations with these child crimes, they're fairly tedious and there's a lot of knowledge you need to know about. Computers and you know, how do we get this information? How do we improve? They've accessed this information and. You know, we're not always capable of keeping up on all that, but the ICAC program will give us training, equipment and um. And additional personnel to help us with these type of investigations, so and that Detective Gettle is. The primary contact for Shell PD for ICAC and I think he's doing really well with that. He's uh investigated numerous crimes that have gone over. Uh different uh throughout numerous jurisdictions and making it better in police departments, and so we're on the road with that as well, so it's looking good. Last, um I'm gonna let Dan talk about citizens' academy because uh this was his great idea. At the end of the year, saying. Saying, you know, we haven't had one in a while, so I'll let you talk about your citizens.
Yeah, I believe it's been um, at least ten, if not twelve years since our last citizens academy. This is an event that we can put on and we can interact with the community. Uh, maybe take a step further and we can engage with our community members. This is no cost at all to the city and it's something that um, I'm able to do on my hours. It's something that in off shift detectives to come in. What the purpose here is, it's in this day and age, our community members are getting their news of what the police can do. Off of shelf talks, the the TV, whatever, which is grossly um. Wrong, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and so if we can bring these citizens in and show them everything from how our court system works, we'll have a judge coming in here. We'll have a prosecutor, a canine demonstration. Um, we got a coroner coming in, we got a sheriff coming in, uh, chief will be coming in, we do this for eight weeks. Not only does it make them good representatives of what we do, but they can talk to your fellow citizens. Um, it starts this engagement process and the city ever wants it to a point where um, we want to be co-reducers um, and solve problems for the community. We have identified community members that have the interest to sit here for eight weeks for two hours to do this. So we have a pool of people that were the probably highly interested in working with us in the future. Um, I know a department right, right before they got body cameras, not us. They engaged the community to come in and talk about their concerns with body cameras and how that policy would look like for their police department. And they actually pulled people from previous citizens academies that had um, uh, gone because they seem to be interested in what was on board. And so here's a perfect example of where we can tie the community into our decision making. And it gives them a little bit of weight in the game and it makes them feel like they are equally important in policing their community that we are that with the badges. It almost makes like people playing. And that's really where the places want to come to um, in the future that we're moving towards. And so citizens academies are something we can do quick, cheap and has great results. We have only about fourteen people signed up, but I'll take, I'll take.
Can I turn in my application right now?
What kind of numbers are you, I mean, how many people can sign up or?
Well, um, I quit my numbers a lot in fact, and so I was, I was comfortable setting the mark at thirty. Um, and this is the first one, like I said, in ten to twelve years. We can do another one right behind it. I've talked to October T O about maybe in the future doing one completely in Spanish. Um, so like I said, it's cheap, it's easy. This one may be fourteen, but the word twenty get out, that's fun and I anticipate.
No, I'm being serious, I have no application.
So is that, um, is that, is that process over now? Are you, have you cut that off yet for applications or when is that?
I haven't, I've been getting them because I still have spots open to start this Thursday at six P M. We've added.
Oh, it just started, oh, okay.
The first night is two nights.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And so um, I got application an hour ago. Um, I got an application sitting over there, so I won't keep a pool of people in week two or three, I'll approve them.
And it's, sorry, two, it it's eight weeks and you said two hours of?
Six P M to eight P M on Thursdays, right?
It's an application process?
It is an application process. In the past, when we look at each applicant, you know, initially they don't have warrants. Um, and uh, you know, some of the applicants we we can talk to because we want them to have a good understanding of what they're trying to do. So something is, some people think it's a job.
We're hired.
Air process, uh, you know, uh, some people think that it's a soapbox. And so we just wanna make a a good understanding of so we don't waste their time.
They're not qualifying on firearms.
No.
I heard they were driving. All the shit.
Uh, last slide here, uh, future uh, programs and things we kind of have our eye on for this year. Um, we're working with the Mason County Sheriff's Department right now to coordinate a ma- major crimes investigation team. Uh, which would be, you know, as I said before, when we get a major crime, a homicide, it really, it's hard for us to keep up with that, with our personnel. I mean, they've already, we already two detectives could get completely inundated really quick with these investigations. It can be very complex, you know, lots of pieces moving around the puzzle. Some people have to be, you know, go into other counties to find people, talk to people, you know, talk to victims, uh, collect evidence. So that can be extremely difficult to do with the staffing of our size. Um, and so we're partnering with the Mason County Sheriff's Department to form, uh, you know, cohesive team that would work together. We would, uh, we would respond to major violent violent felony crimes, homicides. And so if they had one out in the county, we would go out and assist them. We have one in the city, uh, they would come assist us. We just, we just, it's a force multiplier. They have resources that we don't have. We can get a better result out of all our investigations if we just kind of come together and work together um, on these investigations. So that's, uh, we're, we're working on an ILA right now. So I think we hit it back into their quarter a few weeks ago, so wait for that to come back, see.
So ILA that we talked about, how we pay for the services back and forth?
Uh, each agency will be responsible for their own, own officers, if I understood you correctly.
Okay, so we sent something, you go do something in another county, we're paying for.
Yes, well, it won't be another county, it'll be in Mason County only, Mason County only, yes.
We have, yes, we have.
It'll be mutual assistance.
County, we just.
Essentially, yes.
Time.
Yeah, exactly.
But there was. Yeah, time, got it.
You'd incur your own cost for your own staff.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, county helps us.
And with, yeah, I mean, I just will, every, every cloud depends on the year, right? Depends on the amount of investigations.
Actually kind of glad it works out that way.
Yeah.
That's.
At at the, at the, right, at the end of the day, we might be spending more time exchanging a check um, back and forth for the same amount of money than.
Yeah.
Uh, than really providing the service necessary for each department.
When we're looking at the wellness wellness program for the officers. Uh, there, there's a reason why we get to retire fifty degrees because we probably won't make it past sixty. So um, we have to um, instill some better wellness programs within our, our people. Um, not only physically, but mentally, financially, um, there's so many aspects to this. So um, we're working on a uh, a policy right now for this program. Um, and I have a few people on board that are also going to contribute as well for ops, for officers and sergeant levels as well. So it's gonna be a cumulative effort within our department to design a program that's the most efficient for our loads. So.
So that's like gym and.
And and that i- i- it's, it's everything you can think of, you know, and that kind of coincides with my next full day training, defensive tactics room. We've had a storage room back in the PD that has been just, you know, throw it in there, forget about it for so long. Um, they would, they started, they came to me with an idea of making it a training room uh, for, you know, uh, exercise equipment and defensive tactics. And so over the past few months, uh, they've, they've gotten most of everything out of there. We're, we're retrofitting that for defensive tactics area and there's lots of equipment back there. So that's gonna coincide with our, our wellness program as well. So really look forward to that project being done because it's been a long time going.
Wellness grow.
Yeah.
It's really hard.
And it is actually, and it's a new accreditation standard that just came on board anyways, you have to have a wellness program in town. So, uh, social media, um. You don't get it out within the first thirty minutes, they're gonna start making up what, what it's all about anyways. So we need to get it out quicker the better, um, especially when it comes to, you know, active shooter situations or traffic situations. I mean, in the last uh, active shooter training or active shooters that we had up at the high school, we had parents trying to sneak onto the campus and.
Not try, did.
Or did, and and we, and that it helped if we were out on Twitter saying, hey, this is where you need to go meet up here. Because at that point in time, we don't know who's who for what. And that just takes away from our resources to go deal with that, figure that out while we're trying to address the issue. So um, I highly beneficial for us to get the word out there as early as possible so we can control the narrative um, and tell people. The information that they need at that time. And last, um, online reporting, we just, uh, we're getting upgrades to spill it. Someone is capable of online reporting, so as soon as uh, they get that updated appropriately, we're. Uh, people are gonna be able to go on the website and and uh, more comfortable with just typing it in or whatever like that and sending it to us. It doesn't go onto vacuum and disappears. Those will be um, monitored by probably sergeant level. They're gonna go through those and determine whether they require more investigation, whether it's just for information or refer to another agency or for you to prosecute. Uh, refer to the prosecutor. So I'm looking forward to getting that out there as well because a lot of people, they don't want us to show up or they don't want to talk to us. They prefer to do this way. I think that's highly beneficial for us as well.
There's a lot of underreporting.
Yeah, oh, you're absolutely right, yes, there is a lot of underreporting and, you know, I was talking to Joe about that last week about your neighbors and.
Yeah, and they had interrupted uh, Friday night, they had interrupted car problem and I'm like, did you call?
Uh, yeah, right.
Oh, we didn't even think of it, didn't even think of it. I don't get it, I don't, I really don't. And so with this, if this, I'd love to be able to uh, push made some hurry this up and get this done. Thought about it for five, so uh. This is huge and this is a, another call for service that could be eliminated, you know, that uh, you know, that you could be out doing more proactive work. Uh, so we have, whenever this lights up, I'd love to push hard uh, PR wise to get that out to the community. And I, and again, just underreporting, uh, our statistics, they're good, but they're only a decker is what we got, right? So if there is, and we hear a lot about this, a lot of property crime anecdotes about, you know, problems. And then we come back and we ask for the data, you know, we do that a lot, you know, I had this incident happen in this bad moment, uh, bad level of service that I got from the city. You go back and find out that this wasn't even a thing, you know, or you call it in or, you know, their stories don't, you know. So making things more convenient, easy for people to make these reports and demonstrate the actual crime stats that we actually are dealing with on a day to day basis.
And I'm assuming it'll also be available on Spanish.
Yes.
I'll, I'll back up one second, we're talking about the training and evidence storage back here. Evidence storage is an issue for the city of Shelton. We have vehicles and storage containers out of the waste art treatment plant, we have vehicles down behind the dog shelter. Um, we have boxes stacked in in areas, uh, it's not adequate, it it doesn't meet standards. Um, this is something we've talked about with the new shop and lay down yard and the ability to expand. Um, the evidence storage is needed, it's needed for the police department. So something we'll be talking about as we move through, move through the year and and meeting, meeting the needs of the police department at the same time will be needs of public works and other departments for storage. Especially dry storage.
Yeah. In the interim, I mean, Xanderson Fields got a whole bunch of ten thousand square foot empty buildings.
I'm sure it's here.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's, we've, you know, I'm as guilty as anybody, well, but. Lot of the staff here have made do over time, right? And we just, we just, we stack it for, um, we find somebody else to pick up some of the workload. Um, at some point, you know, as we've talked about, especially the sudden budget process last year, at some point, you know. There, there's a, there's a breaking point, there's a tipping point and we start losing staff. Um, we don't, it's wellness program, we don't have a healthy staff that are showing to work. Uh, we don't have the space needs uh, in order to do our jobs, diminishing the level of service to our community. So those are, those could be themes that we'll continue to talk about as we move this year. And we'll really focus uh, to budget process as well into twenty twenty five now that we've made some difficult corrections. Moving into twenty twenty four, now we need to see how we kind of climb back out of this strategically. Uh, make some improvements to the service we provide to our community.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be on tap in a couple of years for patrol cars again. Um, and we fell way behind prior to that, we got caught up a few years ago. That was a lot to get caught up on that. And we even, we didn't buy new cars about new used cars. I would love to get us into the, into the enterprise fleet, whatever we can do. And if, you know, again, because, yeah, well, we're not, twenty twenty six, when those will be due, we're, we're gonna be another. Three million dollar initial investment though, that enterprise.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a huge recurring cost of budget period when we'll have very little funds.
We, we budgeted one vehicle eighty thousand dollars uh, for twenty twenty four.
That, that doesn't keep up with the cycle we need. We need at least two vehicles per year and then every third year it's three vehicles to kind of keep up with everything.
Well, maybe on when we have our retreat, which we can probably bring up in discussion, um, we can talk about an extra police car this year. We have a lot of that one time money we gotta spend.
Well, yeah, we want to be strategic with that, right? And so maybe it's enterprise rather than addressing one vehicle, I mean, it's addressing ten vehicles, twelve vehicles, it'd be a strategic.
Oh, that wasn't all or nothing, that, that enterprise, I thought it was all or nothing.
No, it could be, yeah, it it can be manipulated and adjusted as, as we see fit, absolutely.
Oh, but not citywide.
Not necessarily, you could, you could implement different, uh, different departments and different between portions of likely.
Biggest thing for me on that, getting, not to bring that all up again now, but the biggest thing for me on that was they demonstrated a significant return on investment after like a, like two years. Like, yeah, seven figures return on investment after two years of our fleet costs, something like that, it was ridiculous. Um, so for me to spend the cash to get into that, um, and then the other thing that's gonna do is you're not gonna have two hundred thousand mile cars anymore. You're gonna have sixty five thousand mile cars and talking about recruitment and retention. Uh, I know you guys like your shiny toys and stuff too, like I get it. And so it's like, hey, that's a recruitment retention tool, you know, if it's, you're driving, you're not driving old crap from another department uh, that's been retired. You're gonna get good equipment, you know, we might not be able to pay you the highest wage, we're gonna have the biggest signing bonus, but we're gonna train you and we're gonna give you good equipment, right? Like, that's something we can work on, I think, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I, I agree, it was great, I thought it was a great program, but that's was a lot of money to.
Initial investment.
Come with, yeah.
Absolutely.
Third, third of our general fund budget, right? Maybe a little more.
I don't know, it's an entirety, we need to.
Yeah.
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 I was intimately involved at that point, but we will, we'll certainly bring that back.
No, I think the sheriff's office does that, right? They lease their fleet.
They do, yeah. I don't, I don't, I think it is throughout our first year.
Yeah, 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 that is, because that was the thing, it's got an economy of scale, so we can partner with sheriff's office and. Like, I don't see why we couldn't, same thing, I know Central Mason had desire for like their man vehicles, that guy's obviously not fire trucks, but. That kind of thing, they had talked to me about that a while ago. So again, the barrier entry was high for us.
So you'll see next, next week, you'll see another purchase of a vehicle that, um. It's combined storm fund and it'll, it'll surplus a, an escape, I forget how that's, this escapes eighteen years old or something like that that we got from Mason Transit when they surplus it.
Yeah.
That, that's our standard and you talk about police vehicles, especially local jurisdictions that are surplusing police vehicles and. Uh, our officers are, we're purchasing them, putting our officers in it and uh, there's jurisdictions within Mason County, they're buying new vehicles. Yeah, that's, that's, Councilmember Schmidt said, like something shiny.
But, yeah, I mean, you know, right, when you're buy something, yeah, yeah.
And it functions and we don't have a, we don't have an officer managing the, the world down.
Double brevity.
They should be on the street, I'm providing police services, right? Um, there's, there's a lot of factors. Great, anything else?
I think you guys are doing a great job, great presentation, I hope some of the fellow watches it. Um, I like uh, the last uh, couple of years, actually, hearing all the compliments we get from the citizens about what a great job the police do and how they're, you know. They deal with the public and we just got two emails in the last few weeks about our, our officers going above and beyond. Uh, just taking money out of their own pocket sometimes to do something for somebody and, and I really appreciate that, that's great.
I just wanted to thank Captain Patton for um, starting up again this program for the citizens academy. And that it's really important that every member of the community trusts the police force and that we engage and that that will increase um. Our participation with, you know, just it, it, communities that don't, that haven't necessarily been open or. Compliant with, with the police, that we could have a better relationship so that there is um, more back and forth and a, a better opportunity to um, have, have public safety in the community. So um, thank you very much and I hope there's, there's anyone out there who is fearful, I'll be there, so um. Not that I'm gonna say much, but I just like letting you know that, you know, we are role models of the community and I think someone like me, especially um. Who's, you know, let's put the elephant in the room, is like, I'm the minority person on the council, we need to have more minority um, representation in citizens academy. And I hope um, my participation is going to increase that, so.
Yeah, uh, kind of echoing same sentiments, uh, thank you, this is great, we haven't talked about it in a long time, it's first. It's first, I think, since I've actually been on the council that we've actually had a study session around public safety. Um so hopefully uh you feel supported today, I don't think any one of us had any, we all have positive things to say, so we're all big fans, we're all supportive. And at the same time, um I'm not necessarily gonna speak for everybody, but I think anybody here is telling you to not enforce laws or to do anything like that. We're here to support you, we want, we want our community to be safe, just like you do. Uh we were up against hard times, it's not always super easy, we recognize staffing challenges. I think we all wanna come to the table to help you overcome those, um however we can. Um so, yeah, I appreciate your time. I look forward to continuing to kinda talk through some of these challenges, especially like with state legislation. I'd love to learn more about the new pursuit bill, because we had kind of set a hook there that it could really hamper our abilities. And Mark and I were just up there talking with the pretty fit representatives last week, and uh those are always moments for us to kinda plug, uh vote no on that please moments or vote yes on that, please, you know. So uh they're they're very good about supporting us and you guys as well, so um yeah, I'm thankful for the time.
Yeah, and if there's a bill that you're interested in that's going online, we can support bills online individually, you know, just let us know.
Yeah.
Uh sometimes A W C asks us to do that, but uh you guys, does a bill that you want us to say no or yes on, definitely let us know. Um you know, even some of us, like Joe Smart, can go up there and probably testify up there. Two minutes, actually. But, yeah, so, all right, anything else? All right, okay, does that, Cal's having a new entry discussion? City manager, I mean, yeah. I was just gonna bring up that we needed to set up uh a month or a week or a day for a retreat to talk about budget stuff.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, yeah, I mean, I I in a week or four, I asked about to retreat. I talked to city attorney today, we need to do some o- open public meeting acts training and some post records act training. Um it might be a good time to kind of reaffirm strategic planning, uh uh city council strategic planning goals. Um I think that'll lead us into some development of uh some budget priorities and then a probably either a study session or budget retreat, maybe as we as we get towards, you know, spring, May uh timeframe, but I'd like to hear, you know, kind of availability, whether it's a a weekend or evening or or weekday that might be consistent or um as a council, uh we can have attorney come down and um perform some uh training and we can, we can just, you know, reaffirm some of the strategic goals that have been established prior to three new council members coming on board and uh and work towards, you know, affirming those or or setting up something else that.
Probably does a workshop around that.
Yeah, exactly right. Um I I guess, uh.
Fun process.
Yeah, a a little worse, I I I um, you know, I I'm not planning on, excuse me, uh kind of a all all in strategic planning process facilitated strategic planning process. That's necessary at this point, I'd like to at least sit down and have some feedback. And and then if we're really kinda deviating from the adopted, you know, goals at this point, then maybe that's that warrant um a more intensive um effort. But if it looks like that, you know, we we're trending in that direction, we can stick with what what's been adopted previously or massage those to a certain extent, then, you know, that we can do that in a timely manner without uh without thoughts associated with it.
So it'll be just like one day or?
Yeah, I'm, you know, three, four hours, something like that, half a day. Um, yeah, so I, that's what I said, it could be, it could be an evening or it could be, like I said, it could be a Saturday morning, evening. Um pick a weekday, I know everybody's got varying schedules, so when you're trying to coordinate seven people with with an attorney and some staff at the same time. Um it's, we're we're, we've got a lot of balls in the air, if you will, but um hopefully um, you know, if you have, if you don't mind a weekend or if an evening, if you prefer one of those, I can start kinda throwing out um some dates, I guess, if I had weekday, weekday.
Mondays are easiest for me, like, if you're busy.
I'm flexible.
I'll make time with you.
I'm busy on Tuesdays.
Yeah. That Friday would be fun.
That's right. Gilmore's really busy right now at session, but um maybe in in a little, okay, you can squeeze something out. Mornings, afternoons, I even.
We're better before five.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we'll have a big coffee.
We get.
I.
You're flexible, okay.
Okay, well, wow.
There you go.
All right.
There you go.
All right.
I'm just, June fifteenth, I'm flying off to Europe.
Okay, but before that.
So before June fifteenth.
You got, we'll certainly set something up.
Gone for ten days.
We're uh, we're diving into budget by then.
Yeah.
Yes, so um.
The other thing, Mark, that needs to be included in that is our legislative priorities and process and that.
Great, absolutely, yeah, yeah, we we have, we've told our our representatives that we wanna start early this year um for the long session next year, um we wanna develop legislative priorities, um we wanna move the needle. Um I think that uh the ask of um the one point eight million dollars it's putting to work, putting to work now on the Angle Side Reservoir is really important and 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 great amount of support for for this community. We want efforts like that out of our delegation, out of the state to move the needle, economic development in our community. Um we had some encouraging comments about some potential support for Simpson Trail, so we're looking forward to that. Um you know, of course, this is a short session, not a whole lot of money, especially on the transportation side available, but um we have some deficiencies, particularly um state controlled intersection of Wallace and Olympic Highway North. Um we have a satellite wastewater treatment plant that could serve regionally as an economic uh development catalyst, if you will. Um we have a freight corridor of Olympic High or of a wall scene that has a number of intersections that don't function very well, particularly at peak hours, um so there's some ability there as amongst some other things regionally that we can work with some of our regional partners on too. So I think it's really important um that, you know, Councilmember Schmidt just um brought up that we get, we get ahead of that, we get ahead of that early, particularly if we build some partnerships in this community and and get that pretty good delegation.
Yeah, they, it's encouraging because they follow us.
Yes.
Um and uh, you know, it's it's kinda gotta work in their off season.
Exactly.
But uh they wanna work with us, they see our potential um because we've delivered.
Hmm.
And uh we've done done a good job of delivering projects that uh they've they've funded for us, so you know, now it's just, Sheldon's in a tough spot economically, you know, you know, we keep trying to squeeze the same poor folks for more cash and uh and needing more people.
Yeah.
If we wanna move, we wanna move the needle, that right? Or, you know, be comfortable where we're at and run this really, really well and be good at ten thousand and thirty six hundred rooftops and do that really, really well, but I don't feel that in the community, so um yeah, we're just kind of a tough spot for.
We know where that comes, right? If if you if you don't grow, you start to, you start diminishing services because you're not adding to your tax base. Um. There are some lot of insurance or healthcare costs or, you know, um salaries and agents, so um you start diminishing um the levels of service if you if you don't grow at some point. So let's, let's, let's be, let's make a concerted effort to grow correctly, uh build uh uh, you know, economic development. So it brings jobs and living wage jobs to our community at the same time as it has as appropriate housing uh for for any individual. All demographics here at the same time, that means being strategic and being proactive.
Oh, another thought that joined me.
We haven't settled up at this point, um that's, I think that's a great topic as well to discuss, yeah, and some priorities around that. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, any other items for new discussion? Uh not hearing none, this meeting is adjourned at seven nineteen.
Seven.
Yeah, I go by Verizon.